Good evening, everyone. This is the regular City Council meeting, Rockport City Council, for Tuesday, August 22, 2023. It is 6:30. Would you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Brundritt?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is something I'm right proud to get an opportunity to do. I found out that we have some folks in the community that I've known for a long time that were here a long time before I got here, apparently, because I didn't know they were as old as they are. But I have got a certificate and a proclamation I want to read about GSM Insurance. We have done business with them personally and with the city and like that for over thirty-plus years that I'm aware of, and I've known the family. In fact, I set out in the yard with Jack several years ago and watered his grass after some of his grass died and the city had run over it a time or two to help get his grass going again. But I have known the family and they're good friends, John, Marjorie McDavid, the whole McDavid family, I think, is over there. And I've got, John, if y'all will meet me over here under this thing so they can take pictures, I'm going to read this loud enough that everybody will hear it, the recorder will pick it up. All right. Whereas Theodore Johnson, a Rockport client here and then president of the First National Bank of Rockport, founded GSM Insurers in 1923, was a Rockport Insurance Agency. And whereas the agency was first of its kind in the area, serving the interest of shipbuilders, ranchers, merchants, businesses, and newcomers to the Bloskem Texas coast. And whereas A.C. Glass purchased the agency five years later and also became the president of First National Bank of Rockport. Whereas James H. Sorensen Jr. acquired half ownership in the agency in 1946, changing its name to Glass &amp; Sorensen. And whereas on May 1, 1953, the agency once again changes name to Glass Sorensen &amp; McDavid, after John M. McDavid Sr., the son-in-law of Theodore Johnson, purchased one-third of the agency and became the new general manager. And whereas in 1978, the agency was incorporated under the new agency name Glass Sorensen &amp; McDavid Incorporated. And whereas John M. McDavid Jr., the grandson of Theodore Johnson, the son of John M. McDavid Sr., became the third generation to serve Chief Executive Officer in 1991 and serves that role to this day. Whereas in 1998, Glass Sorensen &amp; McDavid Incorporated became a founding partner, the insurers group, which is now ranked as one of the top fifty brokers in the United States in Business Insurance by Businesses Insurance Magazine, and one of the top twenty agency partnerships in the nation by Insurance Journal. Whereas GSM operates a fourth-generation family business, continuing their track record of great success and service to the coastal Texas community and the city of Rockport, Texas. Therefore, I, Tim Jero, Mayor of the City of Rockport, do hereby congratulate GSM Insurers on their one-hundredth anniversary, having served the needs of Rockport and surrounding coastal communities in Texas. And where else I have herein to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Rockport, Texas, to be affixed this the twenty-second day of August 2023. Thank you so much. Congratulations. I am really proud of you all these years, even if it hasn't been a hundred yet. All right. To establish the presence of the quorum, I want to have a roll call. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Yes.
Ward four.
Yes.
Mayor here, all present, we do have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Citizens to Be Heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed Speaker's Card located on the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the City Secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. On any agenda item or any subject matter, they'll be read at the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the Citizen Participation Form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace, as prohibited by law, shall be caused for the chair to terminate. The offender's time to speak. I have got several cards here. We have some that have been submitted by computer. We will start with those. Andrea, you want to go first?
Yes. We have Rebecca Lichtenberg, 114 Boardwalk Avenue, Rockport, Texas. This is about the out-of-city water surcharge. I am protesting the unfair information of an out-of-city surcharge on water usage. Not only is this inequitable, it is also illegal. Do you want to just read through mine? Do you want to keep going? We have, I'm not saying this name correctly, I'm sorry, Larry Griminger, 32 South Point Circle, Rockport, Texas. This is also on the water rate. Mayor and council members, my family are county residents, not city residents. I've learned of the proposed county resident surcharge increase of the water rates we pay versus residents of the city of Rockport. I recommend you to obtain legal consolation before passing the rate as proposed, as I have read it a 1.5 pass-through rate. Utility services provided by the city of Rockport and allowable actions are regulated through Texas Water Code, Chapter 13, Rates and Services. What you are proposing to do so is not allowed by state law. Without a basis of service cost attributable to a distant service area, all rate paid by customers are to be fair and equitable. Simply stating that you have determined that non-residents will pay more than residents without any justification that is directly related to providing services violates some other state laws as well. All of utility services provided by the city are to be a cost associated directly with that service and that cost equally distributed among all users. That is the law. Choose wisely. Larry J. Griminger.
Andrew Kane, 2106 Lakeview Drive, Rockport. It's on utility rates. The proposed, I don't know, let's just change out-of-city customers, charge out-of-city customers 1.5% the rate of city customers, which just pulled out of the air during a workshop with no data, real expenses, or anything to support it. It is an illegal tax and absolutely against the state Water Code Law, Chapter 13, Section 13.182, 13.184, and 13.189. Rates cannot be unreasonably prejudicial or discriminatory. Rates cannot yield more than a fair return. Rates cannot be unreasonable with preference or prejudice. Assistant Austin City Attorney Leela Fireside did a legal seminar on this, and here are some of the bullet points. Fees that generate revenue more than what is needed to operate the program can be found by a court to be unauthorized taxes. Fees need to be based on actual costs to the city for expenses funded by the fees. The PUC regulatory act and the Texas Water Code allow customers who receive but who are outside the city limits to appeal council's rate decision to the appropriate state agency. Courts can find fees to be illegal taxes if the fees are more than the amount needed to provide service or in excess of the cost to regulate an activity. Opponents can challenge fees by suing the city. Remedies can be sought as refunds, injunctions, and attorney's fees. During the last meeting, y'all stated you need to build some reserves. Okay, do that by applying the rates fair and equitable to all customers. Do not do that by breaking the law and exposing the citizens of Rockport to a potential class action lawsuit. Also, build some reserves by stopping using utility funds as a cash cow by transferring millions of dollars, close to five million, from utility funds just to dump in the general city fund with no accounting of how it was spent and on what to overcome budget. Shortfalls, excuse me. When you do that, you are charging out-of-city consumers illegal taxes. Stop saying the Fulton and County residents don't pay property taxes. That statement doesn't hold water because the property... Stop saying the Fulton County residents don't pay property taxes. The statement doesn't hold water because the property taxes paid by in-city property owners do not support the utilities. In fact, quite the opposite, as utility funds dumped by the millions in the general account of the city. I'll leave you with this, the final recommendation from the legal team of Austin that does not charge out-of-city residents more than in-city customers. I am quoting, "Figure out the cost to provide the service or regulate the activity and use that as your basis for calculating the proposed fee before council approves it. Y'all have no data, facts, or numbers. Ask staff to do their homework. Table the rate, vote tonight, or suffer the consequences because you have been warned that you are breaking the law and can and most likely will be sued for it, seeking any illegal overcharges for as many years as the law will allow."
Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street, Rockport. I am opposed to the city, I am opposed to using a rate equal to 1.5 times of the inside city limit customer utility rates for out-of-city limit utility customers. You have no data to support this astronomical 50% surcharge and are creating an illegal tax on Fulton and County residents to pay for your out-of-control spending. The rate for all water and wastewater customers should be the same. Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street, Rockport. I object to the whitewashing of Citizens to Be Heard comments in the City Minutes. If the minutes are intended to be the official record of the meeting, please tell me what my position was when the city summarized my statements as comments regarding proposed increase in utility rates for out-of-city residents. I understand the desire for brevity in the minutes, and the city can both honor what was said as well as being brief by changing the minutes to reflect. I ask City Council to end the out-of-city rate premium. All of the other writing comments were vaguely summarized and should be corrected as well.
Cameron Marsden, Wren at 36 South Point Circle. Related to raising water utility rates illegally. I'm writing to object to the proposed 50% rate hike for water for non-city residents. County residents are already being charged an inequitable rate illegally, and this proposal just adds insult to injury. Aransas County has many retirees on a fixed income, and I am one of them. It is unconscionable to raise rates on a population unable to vote for or against the people who raise the rates. The same principle of no taxation without representation applies, and as a lawyer, I would argue the extra surcharge acts as a tax on non-city residents. Matt Maxfield, 10 South Point Circle. Reference water pricing. As resident of Aransas County that receives water service from the city of Rockport, I urge citizen, I urge city residents, sorry. As a resident of Aransas County that receives water service from the city of Rockport, I urge city leaders to provide equity to county residents in the pricing of water to that of city residents. This inflated pricing for county residents is unlawful and inequitable. It is also illegal to separate such pricing in Texas without justification, which has not been provided to the PUC. Don Duncan, 20 South Point Circle. The type of rate separation for utility service being proposed for those that are out of Rockport city limits is illegal in Texas. It is a violation of Texas Water Code, Chapter 13, and a violation of Chapter 552, Home Rule Municipality Regulations. Utility rates are to be equitable and fair across all customers served by the system. It is neither fair nor equitable for out-of-city residents to pay 50% more of their utilities than in-city customers.
Chad Stinson, P.O. Box, 2561, Rockport. Regarding rising utility rates, it seems everything has increased in costs over the last year, so I can understand the need to increase utility rates. What I question is increasing rates for one portion of the population, customers outside the city limits, more than the customers, people living inside the city limits. If there is a reason for increasing rates more for customers outside the city limits, I'm sorry, customers outside the city limits, relative to customers inside the city limits, say higher service expenses, I can provide services between the two customers, then this... However, if this is not a measurable and significant difference in the cost to provide service between two customers, then this action could be seen as a form of taxation without representation. But I don't know all details of this issue, so I can only trust that the correct actions be taken. Thank you for your time.
Krisha Paul, 41 Lake Circle, Rockport. I feel like the city of Rockport is violating the law in Texas by charging our neighborhood of Cape Valero a higher price for our water and has been doing so for years.
Three cards that have been filled out at the meeting for citizens wishing to be heard. First is from Tony Kernan. If you would come to the microphone, give your name and address, and state you've got three minutes, once you get started.
Before I start the three minutes, I want to thank everybody. Teresa, the lady that let me in the door, and Stephanie, nice conversation. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have a speech. They're mighty fine letters. I'm not here to say we should get attorneys. It costs money. I want to give a little background of Fulton, where I live. I moved this area five years ago. Fulton didn't have a homestead. They have 900 parcels, as the assessors office says, in Fulton. That's all we have. Half of them are homesteaded. The people there didn't understand. It took a lot of meetings, talking to Fulton people like you, and finally, we got the homestead approved two years ago. In Caris County and Travis County, plus many other counties and states I live, they've always had homesteads. So it's a question, the people didn't understand that they were entitled to something that wasn't offered to them. The town council passed that. Then we understood that we didn't have a ceiling. So we had to go back again, and we convinced the people in power at the time that we should have a ceiling, and we got that done. It took some time. I don't know how long Fulton's been in existence, but that's some history of what I'm talking about now. We're neighbors. We don't want to have, in a stance, visitors, Rockport, and Fulton. We don't want the Hatfields and McCoys. We want to be together. We had a lot of fire districts that could spine into a catastrophe around here, and nobody's going to say, well, we want to rebate on the water we used out of our pumpers. No. We want, I don't want to use the word unity, because somebody used that that didn't keep it, didn't know what he was talking about. But we're friends, and we should be, amicably be able to solve this. Somebody must have messed up in the budget practice to have this go on. I don't know how long the .39 cents was going on every dollar, because I didn't know. Now, when it came out in Mike's paper, and that's how we have to get the information, Mike's paper, and you can see a lot of amount of people come in from Rockport to hear what's going on. So it's education, like we educated the town what we needed. We don't, these people are probably right, but it's going to be years and years, but it's decided. I have a suggestion that we, if you don't try to do this for a month, reverse it. Rockport people, you're going to pay 150, and everybody else pays one. That's not going to go over too well. Why don't we just see how much you're over and divide it up so everybody gets the same amount and go on to the next subject? This thing's going to go on for years, and we don't have that. We want to keep this firm community together. We're small, you're large, and we help each other. The police departments work together. Everything works together. My time's all up. I appreciate you having time.
Thank you, Mr. Kernan. We appreciate you.
Do we have his address on record? I don't think he has.
Yeah. It's on here. Next one is from Doug Webb. Mr. Webb, if you'd come up and give us your name and address. You've got three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Doug Webb. I live at 130 Lamar Drive. I'm a citizen, a registered citizen, and I was former member of the City Charter Review Committee. We presented 26 items to the City Council. They put 25 on the ballot for the citizens to make their decisions. The 26th, the one that they did not put on, I believe is the most important, as it now does not allow citizens to put input on each agenda item. We could talk about it here for a few minutes, but it's not the same as when the agenda item's up there, when you can talk back and discuss something. I'm sure this was done to keep meetings from being too long. I heard there was a six-hour meeting either in Aransas or Ingleside recently, and of course, we don't want that. But by doing this, you have deprived the citizens of the right of stating their position on any agenda item forever. This is not right. I believe the City Council's mostly duty is, the most important duty is to listen to your constituents. I have promised to bring the petition forward, and I know I will get it. I know it will be overwhelmingly easy, because the citizens are mad when they hear about this. This is just not, this is not, this is not right for our republic. To avoid this expense and embarrassment, I want to meet with a committee that y'all put together, and we come up with some compromise where we have a certain number of persons allowed on each item with a certain amount of minutes, and maybe an overall length for the time of each item, and perhaps, if it's redundant, that the mayor has the power to stop that person, say, well, are you saying the same thing as the previous person, so we can move on. I've been chastised by some people for telling you thank you for your time and service. I don't want your position, and I'm thanking you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next is Kristi Rutledge.
Mayor, I have two handouts that are relevant to what I want to speak on. May I hand them out? I'd like for City Council to see them while I'm speaking.
The City Secretary has to take care of those. Kristi, I...
Okay, because per your ordinance here, number six, members of the public speaking at Citizens to Be Heard Public Meetings or utilized in their quest to speak cards are prohibited from using audiovisual materials in their presentation. Any written documents must be distributed, provided in innate copies. I just provided that for you, so it's in your ordinance. Please follow it tonight. If you don't, I'll go ahead and just say this, because you're limiting me right now illegally. I had no idea that Mr. Webb was coming here until a couple of hours ago. To be honest with you, I had given up on the city of Rockport. I felt like you didn't care to follow the state law or your own ordinances regarding citizens' ability to speak at City Council meetings. I knew that that was directly aimed at me, because I had been active on issues that were important as we were emerging. But the only time that there's been multiple items on the agenda is during the budget season and your utility rate hikes. And tonight, you have three items on the agenda that I'd like to speak on, and I can't, because there's not enough time. I need to talk about Citizens to Be Heard, and I am asking you to consider, because I see now other citizens do care about it, and they formed a committee. I'm not involved with that committee. I do not agree with appointing one person to speak for a group. That is not appropriate. Everybody should have their voice. I have never abused your time, and I've always brought logical things. So tonight, I'm just asking you to follow your law. And I just brought it for you as a handout, and you can see that your law's not being followed tonight, the state law or the city ordinance, and I'm not allowed to give you the handout. Regarding the utility rate hike, and that's unfortunate, because it's not about oppression of me, it's about oppression of your entire body, your voters. So, and that's up to you, because, Mayor, it's your choice, but City Council, you're the enablers, so it's up to you. And I don't mean to be so frank, but that's just the way I speak, okay? So that's just the way it is. Regarding your utility rates, they are unjust. I live in the city of Rockport. I don't want your rate hikes. But I want to bring to mind some questions that I just don't understand in your budget, okay? I know one City Council person's new, but you have a CIP budget, and you had a strategic planning session in March of 2022, and in that strategic planning session, you allocated unspent bond money from 2007 and ARP funds to the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of 3.6 million dollars. But in your budget, the ARP money seems to have disappeared. I think it's like now grant proceeds, probably, but it's not allocated to the wastewater treatment plant. So I just kind of wonder if that has anything to do with these out-of-city rate increases? I know that you need some kind of an extra plant to the south to serve new developments that are happening outside of the city limits. I get that, okay? And I get that it's not fair to charge the citizens of Rockport for that, but your fees need to be equitable, they need to be legal, and they need to be charged to the new developer. And that's all I can say on that. And you need to consider the people that you've annexed and you no longer provide service, or you've never provided services to. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. All Consent Agenda items listed or considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone wish to have either of those items removed for separate discussion? If not, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? Now, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous, it passes. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, deliberate an act on possible approval of first reading of an ordinance repealing Chapter 66, Article 2 of the city's Code of Ordinances titled Minor's Curfew, providing for repealing savings and severability clauses and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Council, the ordinance before you is by...
Virtue of House Bill 1819, that provided for the repeal or the non-enforcement of any curfew statutes or laws or ordinances in the state. The ordinance before you repeals Chapter 66, Article 2, which relates to juvenile curfews, just to be in compliance with the new statute, House Bill 1819. And I stand ready for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
The state statute completely removes any juvenile curfew allowances in the city.
Yes, daytime curfew or even evening curfews. Yes, sir.
Just for the record, can you just, in a summary, what that, is that with the state?
I'm sorry?
Can you just explain what the state statute...
Yes, so actually, there's a lot of curfew statutes or curfew provisions and statutes. One of them allowed for juvenile curfews that required them to be reviewed every few years by the city, which the city has been doing since its initial adoption in the early 2000s. And they have been reviewed, but that provision, basically what the statute says, is that you can no longer enforce or adopt curfews that relate to minors in the city. And not only was that provision repealed, but there's also some penal code provisions that are related to truancy, quite honestly, that were repealed as well. So it was just a comprehensive curfew elimination statute.
Thank you.
Does this do anything to the school district? Sorry, I don't mean to have you speak on the school district, but as far as truancy goes, is...
Those provisions were repealed.
They were all gone.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I move to approve item seven as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, the second. Any further question or debate? Now, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Item number eight, deliberate an act on second final reading of an ordinance amending the city of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, Utilities, Article 2, Water Service, Division 3, Service Charges by amending water rates for all customers, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Yes, sir. since its initial adoption in the early two thousands. And they have been reviewed, but that, that provision, basically what the statute says is that you can no longer enforce or adopt curfews that relate to minors in the city. And, and not, not only was, was that provision repealed, but there's also some penal code provisions that are related to truancy, quite honestly, that were repealed as well. So it was just a comprehensive curfew elimination statute.
Thank you.
Does this do anything to the school district? Sorry, I don't mean to have you speak on the school district, but as far as truancy goes, is-
Those provisions were repealed.
They were all gone.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I move to approve items seven as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? Now we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Item number eight, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance amending the city of Rockport code of ordinances, chapter one oh two, utilities, article two, water service, division three, service charges by amending water rates for all customers, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Yes, sir, Mr. Braille.
Thank you. This is the second reading of the ordinance, ordinances, just as you said, utility ordinances. The, again, these, these rates were discussed at the budget workshops on August first and third, where in staff and council, we'll discuss the rates, the rate structures needed to support this proposed budget, debt services, and capital projects. The rates were adjusted for a difference of in-city limits versus out-of-city limits. The rates, if approved, would become effective September fifteenth and would be reflected on the November first billing. So I'll start with water. The water rates, again, wanted to say upfront that San Patricio Water District was anticipating that we would receive about a twenty cent increase for, for our water from, from them. That's coming just right off the top. Water rates, starting inside city limits, for the, water rates, the base charges included the first fifteen hundred gallons of water. The new base rate charges, as you can see in the ordinance, are increasing about thirty cents for the most part down the line for each tap size. The, then, the additional usage over fifteen hundred gallons, the progressive rates, again, increase about twenty cents for anything over fifteen hundred to ten thousand and go up another twenty cent, twenty cents again from what they previously were for anything from ten thousand to fifteen thousand gallons. And then another, and then the twenty cents again increase for every thousand gallons above, above that. On the, on the commercial side, again, minimum charges, that includes as well first fifteen hundred gallons. Those charges go up in general about thirty cents for, for the base charges. And then again, twenty cent increases for what we're talking about, usage over fifteen hundred gallons for those different, and again, progressive rate, rate structures. Hosea water rates increase, that was three dollars and forty-five cents from six dollars and thirty cents to nine seventy-five per month for each thousand gallons used. Rates outside city limits, water rates outside city limits for both residential and commercial are, again, we're at one and a half times what the inside city, rates were for the inside city limits. As well as any of the increases in the rate structures for use in excess of fifteen hundred gallons for each of those, right, ten thousand fifteen and fifteen thousand and higher. Any questions?
Questions, yes?
Yes, I mean, we're going to start off with obviously all the questions that received, or the comments received today. And I would like an explanation on what article they're speaking of and what that, what that would do to us as council and to the city. If we can get an explanation on that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. I do this every day, actually. What am I, I've been doing work in front of the TCEQ and now the PUC with respect to rates. The provisions that, that are, that are directly cited for y'all within chapter thirteen relate to subchapter F and, and which relates to utilities that are investor-owned utilities in the state. These are not, these are inapplicable to municipally-owned utilities. And if you just, and if you read the definition of who they're regulating in those sections, they are specifically for IOU because the PUC and its predecessor agency, the TCEQ, were set up for rate regulation of investor-owned utilities. The, for a, for a utility that is a municipally-owned utility, that rate is solely with the governing body of, which is y'all, city council, to set rates. There is relief that is granted to them if there is a, if, if, if there's a belief that the rates are not accurately set. There is a procedure and appellate process for people that live outside the cities, not only for your city, for city councils, but other types of, I mean, other types of governmental entities that have utilities. But the, but, but the statement that thirteen point, what is it, one eight four and one eight two and one eight six are applicable to the city is incorrect. Those are, those are specifically, if you, if, if you read the law carefully, in conjunction with thirteen point oh oh two of the water code, we're specifically exempted from those provisions as a municipality.
I'm not sure this one really directed towards you, maybe for you. When's the last time you actually have done a rate study?
So the fees that we presented in our work, at the workshop, were based on the, what, what was the name of the company?
New Gen.
We put the New Gen rate study up on the board, and the fees were based on the New Gen rate study. Plus, we added the twenty cent pass-through that San Patricio added to us that was not accounted for in the rate study, the New Gen rate study.
With that rate study, I know that the numbers you gave to us were for in-city more so than outside city because we changed it up at, during the workshop. During, in that study, is there a, a chapter in there that just sets aside what extra cost it is to us do the outside city limits and deliver this water to them?
The, the rate, they, they set an in-city rate and an out-of-city rate in the New Gen study. And the two rates are the cost to provide capital for the system. Now, does it break it out to the level that I think you're asking me? Probably not. Like, it costs us twenty cents to run it out of the city and ten cents to run it in. It doesn't, it doesn't break it out to that level. It has a suggested rate for in the city and out of the city to support the capital improvement plan.
I think that's what I have right now. I'm thinking, sorry.
In that New Gen study, do we have that? Do you, is it available online right now, or do we pull it up?
Let me see if I have it. Or Kimberly has it. That's a better.
Was it, was it in our budget packet?
Uh huh. Uh, no.
No, it wasn't.
It was just on the, on the overhead.
Because if I recall during our discussions, we were below, below the New Gen's recommended rates.
Right. You guys, here we go. Here's the utility rate increase necessary to support the five to ten-year CIP. Now, this is what you were presented last year at your budget, so this is the document we use. And I believe this one doesn't have the in and out of city, but the New Gen does. Is it here? Sorry.
Give me a minute.
Sorry, I should have had that.
Do you want to recess for a couple minutes?
No, no, no. The New Gen study. So this is the New Gen one. This is the, okay, this is, this one is the orange one. Okay. There's a bigger document that has the out of, out of city. Yep, okay, so this, we have the portion of the New Gen study. I don't have it in me, in my,
Possession.
In my possession, but this was the rates that you guys were presented to support the CIP. This is the document you were shown, and we did adopt under the base rate on here, which was, what is the base rate? You were proposed to be at, what, twenty-two fifty-three, and we are adopting twenty-two oh four.
That's for in-city.
That's for in-city. For the out-of-city?
No, this is the proposed. I just want to make sure that's clarified, what you originally proposed.
Thirty-three oh six was the out-of-city being proposed tonight. Proposed tonight, but I don't have the New Gen with the number on there. Wait, I lied. Hold up. This is it. Okay, this is the proposed water rate change. Out-of-city minimum charge was set for twenty-four at twenty-nine ninety-four, and we're proposing thirty-three oh six. So I laid on your, on the dais what we currently charge the percent over versus the one point five percent over. I don't have the difference, but you can see where we are versus where we're going, so.
Can you repeat those numbers again for me?
I can. Outside the city limits, the New Gen study on a three-quarter inch meter minimum charge is thirty, twenty-nine ninety-four. And we have in the budget proposed thirty-three oh six.
And then, one more time, the in-city one, what was the original proposed?
The in-city minimum charge on the same one was twenty-one seventy-four, and we're proposing twenty-one.
That's not what you gave us, right?
Okay, hold on. The minimum charge will be twenty-one seventy-four, and we're proposing twenty-two, even?
I'm looking at that.
Twenty-two oh four.
Yeah, twenty-two oh four.
Yep, I read twenty, twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-one seventy-four, and we are doing twenty-two oh four to include the twenty cent pass-through.
Twenty cents per thousand.
Per thousand, and that's just on the three-quarter inch meter.
Did you have another question? Can we go back to when we originally, the water rates that you originally proposed to us? Do you have that on hand? Without doing the one point five pass-through? Oh, no, that was today's rates. That was the original ones?
Originally, what we proposed to you guys was what was in the study plus the twenty cent pass-through.
So this number right here is what, is not today's. That's the original one?
No, that's what you guys agreed upon in the work session.
No, okay, that's what I'm, so what I'm asking is, the original paperwork that you guys gave us at the workshop, when we, that was more than twenty percent, the original one, because we agreed to do just the twenty percent.
The original one what? With the twenty cents?
No, with, it was above just, it was above twenty percent. We lowered it to that twenty percent.
Yes. You lowered the gas one. Nope. Yeah, this is the original one you got. And it has the new base rate, water increase of one forty-two in the city, and we added the twenty cents to that to do the one sixty-two increase for a new base rate of twenty-two seventy-three. No, for water. Twenty-two seventy-three, and you guys lowered it to twenty-two oh four.
Okay, that's, that's wonderful. And then, so, and that kept that out-city rate the same then?
And then the out-of-city rate, we did-
That would have kept it up the same if we would have done, we were, you didn't propose an, an, an up-charge on the out-city. You just were doing it in-city. Sorry, that's the question I'm asking.
Correct.
When is the utility rate have to be set?
Tonight? No, well, we have to set it, we have to set the utility rate to make the budget because we have to project that as an income, so we need to have the budget adopted by September twenty, nope. September twelfth. So, you know, if, if we want to go back, that's fine, and redo it. We just have to have everything in the, in the budget by September twelfth.
What was the year that study was completed?
Uh, March of twenty-twenty-two, and then did they update it in August?
They updated it in August.
In August of twenty-twenty-two. So it's a year old right now.
And are there like details of that study, not just the graph that was presented to us, but actual like details of justification on each rate increase and why? The whys behind those?
There is. This is the, this is just the PowerPoint. There's a book.
Is it, there's a book that goes with it?
There's some backup, but we talk about the ten-year expenses that we're going to have. There's a, the rate performance, estimated, estimated sufficiency, how we're going to support the CIP, what will make over time, a potential debt schedule. Yeah, regional bill comparison. Here's everybody else's bills, so on. Water and wastewater, we're, we're kind of towards the top. But we don't move out of the, the position, but yes, it's a full one hundred percent rate study with all the documentation needed to support the rates.
There are other questions?
I just want to comment. So we, we did get this in twenty-twenty-two, Stephanie, just to kind of clarify. We did, we got the packets. And I know the council at that time did feel comfortable with the information out there. To do the rate increases slowly over the next couple of years, their five, their five-year study is what happened at that council meeting. I know we're at this, we're at a different standpoint right now, but back when we had got it, we did get that packet, and that was kind of our consensus that we have to, you know, fund these projects, and we have to fund what has to happen in the city to make sure that our citizens are receiving the water they need to. That's, that was a comfortable rate for everyone to slowly increase over the years.
And here's the, the proposed rates. It says it addresses all key, key issues. The ten-year capital projects, CIP is funded through planned debt issuance, meeting financial objectives and policies. Builds back days' operating cash, hits debt service coverage, makes tricks, wastewater on schedule to pay for itself, near-term growth expected to pick up. Expected growth helps reduce rate impacts. The only thing on there is we have decided, I guess, not to take on debt at this point because we're still working on the bond and the ARPA projects that we had discussed or that we've been discussing since I've been here. So there's no need for us to take debt until those projects are complete. But the rate will pay for the debt service if we choose to do that, or we can build the fund and pay cash for the CIPs.
Other questions?
Regarding the budget schedule, to, to Councilman Hatman's question on kind of our schedule, are we still on track to receive the certified appraisals on, what is it, Thursday?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We haven't heard any different, so. I do have this in my reports to talk about how we want to, how we want to roll through the rest of this schedule. You guys will make some decisions, but we, we hope to have those Thursday. Like I said, they haven't told us any different.
Would it be prudent to, to maybe offset the residential with the commercial rate? Would that be fair and equitable, or would that be a violation of the code as well, or potential? I mean, if we, if we raise the commercial rates higher than-
It can be done, yes.
Yeah, you can put more on the commercial, which I think we did. What did we do for commercial?
No, the, the inside residential and commercial are-
The same, and the outside residential and commercial is the same. That's right. So yeah, you could raise.
We set it at one point five.
Yeah, you could raise the in-city commercial more to offset either one. I mean, I mean, you, you get to do what you want to do.
So Mayor, I, you know, just kind of going back over the conversation between the budget workshop, our last meeting here. You know, the, the variation between in-city and out-of-city is a longstanding, um, policy. We're not, we, we're not proposing to bring an outside-the-city grade for the first time ever. Um, it is a somewhat of an increase. Um, we were looking at essentially how to reduce overall what the recommendation was, um, based on the study and, and still be able to make some progress, um, on the goals. Uh, so we were already scaling back. Um, you know, the one point five, I thought made sense to me as a, as an even number. Um, since we were, I believe we were proposing a one point three-six. And, you know, everybody was, was having to give a little bit. For me, you know, I, you know, I, I think if staff still, you know, recommends that this is, I'll say legal, if it's still legal, it's still within our rights that, you know, we continue to, to move forward on our course of action. Um, if we do want to change, I would ask that we potentially take this maybe to, I hate to do it, but another short workshop sometime in the next week or so. Because any changes we make, if we propose a change tonight on second reading, it's gonna have a ripple effect through really everything in the plan for the next year, so I'm not, I'm not prepared to be able to answer for that. So, you know, we could, I hate to kick the can, we could postpone and come back and reevaluate everything, or we could move forward on a vote. I guess if it fails, it has to be kicked the can anyways.
The fact of the matter is, when we have gone through all of the workshops and said and reviewed everything and, and more or less, with some concerns obviously, agreed that what we had was probably the best plan that we could work with. There was work done on the budget based on those figures and to change the numbers now unless there is adequate reason for it. And, and the legality of it, as far as I'm concerned, is not in question. We worked with our legal staff and were advised that this was not any kind of a criminal violation or a violation of any kind of law. And to have to redo the budget at this late date is going to be a serious problem unless there is a really obvious overcharge somewhere, and I don't see that.
If I may, if you'll look at the sheet, you can see what we're going from and to. So, I, I know there's only one instance, but there's actually one instance that the out-of-city rate will lower uh, with the one point five, so there's anywhere from ten to twelve percent increase. It's not a fifty percent increase. Um, it's just a leveling of the numbers so that every single meter type isn't a different, different percentage. Like I said, you can see what we're going from and what we're going to on every, every item here. And you can see on the, um, gas that we, we didn't really do anything. We didn't take any of the rate study information. So, like I said, you can see the different, what the actual increase is gonna be. Um, it's not a fifty percent increase on anybody anywhere.
So I'm kind of just gonna go with, um, you know, Councilwoman Hale here. I think what, and the mayor, I completely, you know, appreciate your comments, but at this moment, I don't want to ever go backwards. I, I would don't ever want to go backwards. I always want to, I do want to move forward, but I always als- also want to make a decision based where I'm comfortable making that decision. And I want to be able to know all the information I have in, in front of me, to know that I'm making that decision based on the information that I can see in front of me. Now, I, I trust Art knows that this is legal. I'm not, that's not my point. I want to trust, you know, the numbers, but even coming up with a solution saying commercial goes higher. There seems to be more questions right now for us to maybe change a little bit to make it better. Um, to tighten it up a little bit and help, you know, either side of the situation. And I feel if we can do that, um, that's what we're here to do is to make sure that we are benefiting these guys, even if it means that we have to come in an extra week, that means we have to do an extra work. It's not fun, but that's what we're here to do. If it's possible, and again, I'm not, it's feasible, I, I would feel comfortable if we have the time. Again, I know there's timelines and there's time limits and I know it's, your guys just work really hard and it's, it's on us for just jumping the gun in the first place and going that one point five and, but doesn't mean that we can't go a little bit backwards here and see if there's better that we can do on that. So if we wanted to do, like, not even a workshop, but like even just do a special meeting, have that meeting where we're getting the, that, say that whole packet, Stephanie or Danielle or, you know, Brad haven't maybe seen it, Mayor, they can look at it. Um, if we can just kind of go over the statute, um, kind of go a little bit over different numbers that we can do and just come in, you know, even next week and we can even vote on it next, I'm sure, because it'd be enough time and just get it out there. I would feel more comfortable as a councilwoman here than just going ahead and voting on something that I'm not hundred percent fully understanding right now. That's my.
I would agree. I want to be able to make a well-informed decision and I, I support the idea that it remains fair and unscrupulous, so. I'm all about providing more time, um, and coming back together to look over all the different options.
My question to each of you would be, does that mean that you want to go down this entire list and redo all of them?
I would like to look at all, uh, utilities.
This, this being second reading of ordinance, can we re, pass the ordinance and revisit, change the numbers, uh, amend or repeal the set ordinance?
You can repeal an ordinance at any time.
We, we, there is some ability to repeal, to repeal any right.
Yeah, you can repeal an ordinance, yes.
So if we, if we took it to a vote.
Sorry, go ahead.
If we took it to a vote tonight, in whichever way it went, we could, uh, we could come back at next.
If, if you, if it went to vote tonight and it failed, then you, when it comes back again, it would have to be read twice.
But if they just table it tonight?
Yeah, if they table it tonight.
Then you just have to do the second reading. You don't, yeah, you don't want to vote.
Uh, for me, when we were in the workshop, how you presented it and the decision we got to made absolute sense. Now that we slept a little bit, I still believe we made the right decision, but it's really hard to explain it because we don't have kind of a good packet, if you will. Um, like this information is helpful. I think being able to, um, answer to some of the, the citizen concerns about whether or not the action is legal. Being able to respond to the fact that this is not a one point five change out of blue. This is an adjustment of an existing outside-city rate. Um, and being able to explain the math that it's not fifty percent. I mean, I've, I've heard a lot of that this last week. They were reading charge fifty percent more, fifty percent more, like it's something new. And it's not a, it's not a completely inaccurate statement, but it's also not a fully accurate statement either. So, um, I, I, I hate to do this to staff, but, you know, that, that rate study that did come in before Council, Councilperson Springell and I were here. Um, I've not had a chance to look at it. I trust the information, um, that, that's in there, but I think maybe, um, a little bit cleaner package, cleaner presentation, um, that's, that's made publicly available prior to the meeting might be helpful. So, I don't know, maybe if one week's enough time, that we do a special meeting, workshop, close the workshop, go and convene a special meeting so we can, the items would be the second reading. Um, that may be the only way to, to move this forward.
So that's a question, is it able to table it so we can keep the second reading and have a workshop beforehand and still have that?
But as, if we postpone it, not table, postpone it, right, postpone, uh, can we, is on the September fifth meeting, the special meeting?
No, we need to do before that. It, it's, every change we make is, it's seven hours to run a report. So if we're gonna present you with options, we need to get it done beforehand and you guys need to have a decision made before that special meeting. So we need to do something next week if you want to change it, because it's gonna take a lot of time for us to run different scenarios, which we'll do whatever you want. We just have, we can't run it that close to the line and then you guys decide that you don't like it and you want something different.
I would like to also ask, um, I know you said the study is a year old now and there has been a lot of changes uh, or needs come about in the last year. Can those be written up to be included?
I'm sorry?
As far as any capital improvement needs that occurred in the last year or have increased in expenses compared to that study one year ago? Can those be included?
Absolutely. Actually, actually, no. I, I can't tell you how much wastewater plant has increased in the last year.
Is there anything that is in our, um, capital plan as of right now that's not included in that study? Or the expense is not the same as it was in that study originally?
Is there anything in our capital improvement plan?
That's not included in that study?
Not that I know of. There, there have not, there's not new capital items added to our plan. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, since that study was provided.
I don't think so. The cost of everything has increased, but, but I can't tell you how much.
We are, we are getting a rate improvement plan next month.
Right, but that wasn't included in here. It's not part of this capital plan.
And to go to your question, Mayor, I, I'm comfortable, I'm not, the only two that I'm really that's not the most comfortable is the water and the wastewater. The other ones I'm not as concerned about, but I understand this is not, I'm not, I, the staff, I'm not trying to put extra burden on you, um, but that's just.
We need a motion.
So I, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, table this item.
Postpone.
Postpone this item until, uh,
Just postpone all?
Postpone the item, um, depending on a workshop and and that can still do the second reading?
Yeah, postpone for a future meeting.
Okay.
But just do them all in one motion.
Can I do them all? Do I read the numbers of the ordinance?
Yeah, just item number seven, eight, nine.
No, it's eight. Hey, I make a motion to postpone, um, agenda items number eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, uh, depending on a workshop and future discussion and act on it.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion or question? On the vote, or one?
Aye.
Or two?
Aye.
Or three?
Aye.
Or four?
Aye.
Mayor, no. Motion passes for one. Next item on the agenda, number fourteen, discussion proposal and possible future action regarding the addition of a school zone to the area around ABC Learning Center and the addition of four-way stop the intersections next to the facility.
So the requester appears to not be here, so. I would say we can.
I had asked, uh, Chief Stevens to look at that for us.
Okay, he's not able to make it tonight. I'll put it on another agenda.
City manager report.
Okay, on your budget calendar, um, I kind of, um, marked up the things that did not happen mostly because of the appraisal district roles. Um, and I wanted to discuss just what you had said. We were talking today that we may need a work session next week. So, um, if we can, I, I'm sure you don't have your social calendars in front of you right now, but I'd like to tentatively take next Thursday night, if we can start at five-thirty, we'll do a work session for an hour and a half. At seven o'clock, convene into a regular meeting if that works for y'all. We could. We have something on Tuesday. We could do Tuesday or Thursday?
I would prefer Thursday.
I'm open both days.
Say that again?
We're just going over the dates.
Twenty-ninth is the Thursday?
Tuesday.
Twenty-ninth is Tuesday?
Yeah, thirty-first is the.
Thirty-first, twenty-nine and thirty-one.
I'm open both days, whatever works, that's good.
It's really not good, but we'll make it work.
Monday? What does Monday look like?
I'm of a previous, I'm in employment on twenty-eight, twenty-nine, but if I need to.
All right, blast for me, Wednesday.
I'll make it work, I'm open to it.
You want Wednesday?
I can make Wednesday work.
You can make Wednesday work, Brad?
Yes, ma'am.
I can make any day work.
Okay, so we'll start here at five-thirty, work session for an hour and a half. And then at seven o'clock, we'll convene into a regular meeting.
That'll give you all.
We got it, don't worry about it.
I could do it earlier. I understand.
What? Yeah, no, five, five-thirty's good for us, um, a- and Kimberly did just make a good point. Do y'all have something you want us to start with?
I like the, the idea of the commercial being higher, because they put a lot more strain into it.
Okay, in-city commercial, raise in-city commercial rates. Let's take those. Okay.
For me, I think, I mean, if you could walk us back through what was proposed at the budget workshop. Help remind us how we got to the proposal. Provides clarity on legal authority for us. And any alternates that, that staff made.
Yep, we'll have some ideas.
Recognizing that our goal is to keep going down. What are the ramifications if it's continuing to go down?
Got it.
Anything else?
Before then, can we get a copy of the study?
I will send y'all so much information.
Thank you.
Between now and then.
We're gonna make, make us recreate our decision.
Anything else in your report?
No, sir.
Reports from council?
Uh, last week I, um, went and completed the TML newly elected official orientation, which I enjoyed a lot. And, uh, just most recently listening to constituents' concerns. About it for one more.
Attended PNZ this week, uh, the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, move forward on a recommendation to remove Mr. Howard, um, and that will be coming to council for action at a future meeting. Um, they also had discussion about adding some training. They've had some really short meetings and so the discussion was to, kind of capitalize on the fact that they're all together to, to, uh, learn from Carrie and, and just kind of do some mini lessons, um, especially if there's gonna be things coming down the line for them. Talked about, um, comprehensive plan, talked about, uh, commercial zoning, there were a few other things. So really proud of them for, for accepting the challenge to, um, really extend their meetings when there's an opportunity. And then also, um, uh, looking forward to more routine updates on other projects that are uh, permitted in the area that may not require zoning but have community impacts. Um, and so, uh, I think that's gonna make for a much more meaningful, um, meaning, or meeting time for them. And appreciate, uh, Carrie and Mr. Donahoe for supporting that, uh, with those folks and of course the citizen, uh, citizens who have stepped up to serve on that, uh, committee. So, that's it for now.
Three?
Uh, our drainage projects are still under, underway, uh, by all reports from constituents, uh, they're happy with the work. They're happy to see people out there working, uh, mainly, and, uh, and that's, that's a big thing. And, uh, someday it'll be completed and everybody be happy. But other than that, that's all I have for y'all.
Um, I attended, um, I'm a liaison for the Chamber of Commerce and also the tourism development. Um, it's, was just pretty standard meetings, uh, just talking about how they, uh, promote our community. Um, I also attended, um, the new.
I also attended the new, we have a new and approved governmental affairs committee that is through the chamber, but it does meet with, we had all the entities, we had the county, we had the Nav District there, we had, I was there and then we had the chamber and GLO was also attendance and it's, we, we moved it from 7:30 to 4:30, which I think works a little bit better for people and their, and their timing. So, we had our first meeting and it went really well and it's, it was very well attended and I enjoyed it and so I encourage anyone else that wants to learn more about our government and it's open to the public, so just keep an eye out for that. That is about it on my end.
I don't have anything new. City council holding executive session pursuant provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.071, consultations with attorney seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, A, Concho Street, General Land Office, GLO Drainage Projects, and B, win litigation. We are in executive session, it is 7:41.